Willacoochee in Atkinson County, Georgia. Information. 33 Fleetwood Avenue. Willacoochee, Georgia, 31650. Phone 912-534-5152. Facts 912-534-5848. www.willacoochee.com. At a glance. Population official 1,240. Population estimate 1,227. Year of incorporation 1889. Regional Commission, Southern Georgia. GMA District 11. County Atkinson. Hours and meeting times. City Hall operating hours 8 to 5:00 M.F. Government meets first Monday at 7 o'clock. Elected officials Mayor Dante Griffin. Councilmember Glenn Bailey. Councilmember Verniel Hall. Councilmember Malcolm Jones. Councilmember Kelsha Lott. Councilmember George Myers. Appointed officials. City Clerk Patricia Hilton. Other officials asterisk. Fire Chief Lee Pittman. Municipal Court Clerk Jeanette Johnson. Municipal Court Judge Douglas Mitchell. Public Works Director Glenn Joyner. Parks and Recreation Director Ray Lanier. Asterisk functional titles only. Actual titles may vary from city to city. State Senate, Senate District 8 Honorable Russ Goodman. State House, House District 176 Honorable James Burchett. Federal Congressional District 8 Honorable Austin Scott. U.S. Senate Honorable John Ossoff Honorable Raphael G. Warnock.
That's great. Yes, my mayor Dante Griffin likes to like me make your appointments.
George Foster Ryan.
Okay.
Dallas.
Okay.
Get you first. Okay, you too.
Okay, it's plenty of people.
Thank you so much, man. Thank you so much. Alright, thank you. Alright, okay. At 7 o'clock, the call is being on. Willacoochee City Council meeting March 24, 2024. Start officially 7 o'clock. George is like always, couldn't be ready that time. Having a prayer.
We're going to have power to God. I think of God. That would be done on earth as a testament. Give us the state our day to pray. And give us the day as we should give our death. The need is not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. The dying to be powerful forever and ever.
Alright, why don't I stand here?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, council members. The big motion.
I'm all good.
Awesome. All the papers. I want to prove, push through the beers, pay the beers. I make the most.
I'll say it.
All the papers. I have motion resolutions. Do we have a, this is killing you.
Yes, ma'am.
That's my first time meeting this. Jim Hall, do you prefer Carl Kimlin? Jim Hall, Mr. Brenner Day. Alright, Mr. Brenner, you want to just come?
Yes, my same complaints. I want to make sure that the summer is coming in. We all know about the situation I got around in the household. I want the councilmen, I want to look at it and do periodic checks on it because I don't want to have to keep the call every time the pump is tearing up or stopping. And because I don't want to deal with that smell this year, this summer. So I want to know if y'all intend to do periodic check on that pump to make sure it's working.
Okay, I'm not aware of what's going on. Can you elaborate more in detail?
Well, the pump event, they all know they having a problem with it smelling. I have, I had a lot of bike up in the house, but right now, as of now, I've had the plumber to come through all the pipes in my house. And Glenn had put something down that could probably stop some biking up in my house like it was going to seem to be working. But my complaint now is the pump when it's lights go out or it stopped functioning for some reason, it's going to have an odor.
Okay. Miss, it's all that trees have fixed right now because we have renovated. Not so much purchased, but we have renovated. I mean renovated, we have actually built some machines ourselves that can compensate for the expense of having to purchase a new machine. And so right now, our sewer system is pretty much up to par. You know, kind of patting my guys on the back for that. Standing here pressing the game. Alright. Mr. Jim Hall.
Yeah. Speaking on behalf of a part of the city, the citizens of the city of Willacoochee. And you have your male pro temp, you know, it's in the book, a conflict venture. And I be a male pro temp and also work for the city. So that's a conflict venture. I talked with Russ Patel Tuesday of last week. I also spoke with her and everything. And he told me, he said, well, I can tell you it's a conflict venture, but can I make him quit? He says it's up to him and the city. He said, but if you got anything you want to do, you go ahead. I said, oh, I will. I told him I already talked with the civil rights lawyers. And they already told me if it's in need, contact State Attorney General office. Just call them. And when it get to that level, you know what time it is then.
Alright, let me see this.
This is on this call.
This is something we'll go into an executive session. It's not, we're not going to discuss legalistics in front of everybody. I mean, I'm not trying to be ugly. We haven't even had an opportunity to meet and discuss this at all. Because he came after the last meeting. Didn't tell me who he was before he came and he showed up. And he came with this issue. And I told him, you know, that I would discuss this with you all tonight. But I haven't, I haven't talked to anybody.
Who came to you, Mr. Hall, Mr. Tim?
Yes, but he said he was somebody else. And he said he was coming for another reason when he showed up. I still met with.
Who came to you, Mr. Hall and Mr. Tim?
Okay, hold on, hold on. Let's straighten that right there now. I hate when somebody say other things where, and I feel like, I ain't no feel like. I know you just like, if you been over where I was, I was a council when we saw this other guy.
I didn't have your number, Mr. Hall. And you told me you were somebody else and you were calling about something else. And you asked to meet with me and I said, I'd be glad to meet you.
Oh, no.
When I hit the door, it was not, it wasn't, it was you. It wasn't the person's name that you said.
Well, I tell you what. Radio, all this don't lie.
That'd be fine.
That's right.
Does it matter to me because I know I'm not telling the story?
Whatever. Because you just lied.
Well, I'll say this. We will discuss this later in executive session. But as of right now, I know we want some type of explanation. But now, according to ordinance, our ordinance states that in our municipality, kind of long word, council member or alderman, which is council member, alderman and also the mayor can hold two positions in this league.
You show it to me. Because I got, we got the same book, I know we do.
Yeah, we got the same book there.
And I can show it to you, you tell the one or not.
Section 216, employment of a city official. The mayor or heating member of the board or alderman shall be qualified to serve in municipality in any office or position or agency or employment, except that they should not serve in a position of one another as a member of the government authority. Say that one of the aldermen may be designated as mayor pro temp to serve in the absence of disability of the mayor.
I like to get a copy of that right there.
Where's in?
It ain't in that seat over.
Oh, yeah. Where did I get this from? Well, while you're looking for that, also I would say this, is that wherever the last final findings are, it's very unlikely I'm going to do anything with his position because right now, he's very bothered to our city functions. Very bothered.
What was it, Mr. Griffin? It said councilor or alderman of a municipality cooperation shall be ineligible to hold any other municipal office during the term of office for which the councilor or alderman was chosen unless he freely resign as a councilor or alderman before entering such other office. This code shall apply to all elected officials of municipal cooperation. And you can see this in your GMA book also, state override city.
Alright, let me tell you something about that guy. Hold on, hold on. Let me see this, let me see this.
I'm gonna show it to you in your, in your, in your reference book.
What you have to understand, that is a general template. A template is put in place where you can work around. Because now, I attended a meeting here a couple months ago when the city itself only had 500 residents. So they had, had been established as a city. And at that time, they had to recognize a mayor, a council, council members, and so. Out of those 500 people, 499 was kids votes. So them 499 that wasn't kids votes, they were letting for, come office. So you had relatives, you had vote laws, so on and so forth. So what I'm saying, that GMA book, that's a template. And you can work around it, you develop from it. That's guidelines.
You don't want to say you went to that meeting. So I don't know if you're telling the truth on that. I'm just hoping he's right with you.
No, I understand that, I understand that. I'm not going to lie, I'm not going to lie on TV right now. It's bad, I recorded. When I could be, I could be.
You gonna have to show it to them.
It could be, it could be right, right to what I can see.
I know.
Because it was at governor's meeting, not governor's, I don't know. Wow, I promote myself to the governor. But it was elected official, newly elected official meeting, which consisted of all mayors in Titten, Georgia. Anyway, Mr. Hall, wait a little bit. Uh, Mr. Jerry.
Yes, I come to complain about you got certain parts of the city lit up like a Christmas tree and certain parts it dark. You got the trike out there, got eight lights. When you get in the residential area, ain't hardly nobody. Which is more important, the trike or the residential? It's eight lights, go out there and count. You go count. I know because I ride every day.
Hey, y'all gotta explain yourself and catch me up after your meeting. I'm not going, I'm not going to argue with you on that, you know.
And the fire hydrant. Certain, certain parts of the city ain't hardly no fire hydrant.
Okay. Well, that's something that's something coming because we got our five representatives here. And I once thought, you know, that even though it's a city, you know, we control, have control of the fire hydrants and stuff like that. Believe it or not, you know, them guys actually pleasing about flushing and stuff like that. I know that's not what you're talking about. But what we're talking about, you know, I was talking about having some more in place. But now, I'm glad to hear because I like the old way of doing thing with five. You know, you don't hook up to a fire hydrant anymore.
Yeah, we still, we still, we still try to utilize, we utilize the hydrants. Especially in our cities, in our counties, we don't have hydrants. So we don't utilize them then as much, but.
But if you don't mind explaining, tell me how you guys operate now?
So, so we operate as far as the hydrants go. Not only is Willacoochee probably in need of some hydrants, City of Pearson is also in need of a lot of hydrants as well. In your smaller municipalities, you see a decrease in, in the maintenance on your hydrants and the water flow. So, and as a matter of fact, this week on our schedule, we have a hydrant maintenance. So we'll go out this week to all the hydrants in Pearson, all the hydrants in Willacoochee. And what we'll do is we'll weed around them, we'll spray around them. And then, and then two weeks after that, toward the end of, end of the month, we'll go around and we'll test all the hydrants. We'll get a static, we'll get a residual, and we'll get a flow test on every hydrant in the, in the city.
Hey, look, excuse you, but what I wanted, what I wanted you to see was how you, how you got pumped from one truck to the next.
Oh, so, so we also, in, in City of Willacoochee and City of Pearson, we also have tanker trucks. We've got 3,000 gallon tanker truck here. Actually, we have, we house the newest tanker that we have here in Willacoochee. And we can relay pump. So we, we can, we like to utilize the hydrants as long as we got a lot of flow on them. If not, then we can relay pump from one truck to another. And constantly, basically, we'll go fill a truck, bring a truck, and relay pump. So I can pump my truck to your truck, you take your truck and you put the fire out. When we run out of water on my truck, we'll bring in another truck and swap them around. We do a lot more of that in the, in the rural areas, but we do utilize that here in Willacoochee as well.
Y'all also, getting y'all, I'm sorry, sorry for being rude to you, but was it last year that as part of the county plan that y'all went out and mapped all the hydrants and where they were? Because I remember Robbie came one time and y'all had, y'all had gone and mapped them all and like where there was a need for them. And so we have a plan in place.
Yes, so yeah, Robbie would have more of that information than I would. Yeah, we've got, we've got statistics and, and water. We got all kinds of water charts that we supposed to follow. That we utilize, especially in the county more so than here. Like I said, you're supposed to have a hydrant. You want to have a hydrant on every street any way possible. We have enough oars on our truck, we can supply off of a hydrant 1,000 foot. So I mean, that's, that's a pretty good way, especially whenever you're looking at your, your water sources and, and your fire demand. But anyway, we, we, we have hydrants here in the city. We probably need a few more. It wouldn't hurt to have a few more, but they're about $4,500 a hydrant. So that's, they, they get expensive.
If there's an area that you're concerned, you know, with specifically that you think is, doesn't have, but maybe, please let, please let the mayor's office know where they can have.
They got people know that.
And come, and come see us at the fire station.
Yeah, let that guy know as well.
Okay, I'm going for you.
Love to see, I got a map on my phone. This is all the hydrants in Willacoochee. Everything that's red is everywhere hydrated.
I know where they are.
Yes, yes. Well, I might need, I might need to go see you and you might can show us. But yeah, most definitely, anytime y'all come to the fire station, that's good for anybody in here. Come see us, y'all, y'all morning up.
There's nothing, Jerry.
Okay, how about your lights?
Yeah, that's my.
It's dark in some areas. It don't make no sense when you get in a residence area, it's not enough light.
I agree with you.
You got that thing lit up like a Christmas tree. Nobody stay over there.
Well, now, I know I got some lights. I'm supposed to, I got a flag, lights out. And really, I just ain't had time because I had so much going on. But I'm going to get to them. When I flag, I come up here. This whole joint problem. But I just ain't had time right now. I mean, I, I just been ripping the running, backing up the doctor. And I got to see by myself. But I'm starting on that this week.
And another problem. Been hauling dirt all last week. You haul dirt at certain places and you overlook certain places. Hey, I live in this town, I ride around every day. I know what all y'all doing. You can't fool me. On the road that way Gary was staying, no dirt been hauled.
Well, I.
I reported you today. Gary reported you. How long you reported?
Man, we been reporting for years now. Malcolm, no, Jordan, no.
Until the signs.
For years ain't, for years ain't the Jordan.
Until the street signs.
And, and the only thing about that there, certain one on the whole is brush, by plane. And don't haul no dirt up there.
Well, look, it's, it's different now. You know, this is the first time I hear about this situation. Well, look, I've been off for three, I've been off for three, three months.
Three months.
And you know, right now, I came with attitude like a lot of y'all guys did. Came to think I can run and make things happen right away. It don't happen like that. Right now, I'm taking baby steps. And right now, I think that, I think I've accomplished a lot, but not only myself. I think that we have accomplished a lot in that shop here.
I believe you, bro. I believe you right there.
Just give us, just give us some time, you know, things can happen.
I believe you have.
Hey, go back to the street sign. Street sign been told out what took down, I know who took it down. Before you got here. You cannot take the street sign, that's government problem. You in that fault, the rest don't have fault.
Well, we're not doing that.
It's Jerry Hall Road sign. You know, that's government problem. Y'all can get in big time trouble for that. And I'm going home.
Well, thank you, Jerry.
Mr. Griffin, I got another, I got another question. I like to know when we got that code relief money, what happened?
That's before my time, I don't have any idea. That's before my time, I don't have any idea.
So, so we need to get somebody to investigate all this?
Well, it could.
Okay.
I'm going to let you guys know something right now. I may be letting out misinformation that I need to. But right now, our city is in, in a bad turmoil of support financially.
You right, you right.
You know, as a matter of fact, we're next to the last in the state for being able, you know, to accommodate our citizens better because of we lack us, we lost our funding. And our funding was, you know, you can blame on somebody, you can blame on this person here. But what happened, we're like eligible for funding, hopefully, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that by the end of this year, for more likely to be next year. So right now, we having to work what we can get. Really, that's like I'm saying that these city employers I have, if you actually knew how they was working, what it was working for, this is joking. And you know, I said, I had strong ideas when I came here. I want to replace this, I want to replace that one. But you know, I can't do that because I don't have the money for it. And right now, I, I consider myself lucky. And you guys should do too, if you knew actually what was going on to have these guys actually being here doing what they do for the community.
Only thing I've seen them do is riding around.
Well, let me tell you something about that too now. Because now, when, before I got here.
I saw, it took, it took three of them to take down one little old sign. Just one little plastic sign, I was like sitting there like, I forgot.
Well, before I got here, on the outside looking in, you know, you see a lot of things. On the outside looking in, you see a lot of things. And what we have had to do with other cities that have, you know, that we don't have, we have to work with those guys. Some equipment that we have, you know, we got a lot to do. And then come back and help us out. And but see a situation like that, what you only see, you only see Willacoochee truck going one way. You don't see Titten truck coming back this way, but when you do, you don't know what's wrong.
I see Willacoochee truck everywhere.
Okay, well, you know, we got a friendly, we got a friendly, uh, surrounding counties. And we aim to help people so that we can get, you know, some of the equipment and some of the things that we need to keep our city moving.
When you don't went back, you got someone that have working on their own personal stuff. Ain't that right, Marty? I don't told you, ain't a joke. I see, I see, I see this man, I say, y'all, y'all, y'all off a luck break. What he doing, him working on that little barrel thing? Working on an own personal truck. Didn't I tell you that? Okay, then. And another, and another thing, I ain't never seen a city where you got, where you work right here in town and then you got to drive to make the truck everywhere. You right here in town, he damn near, he can walk to the job.
Yeah. You know, things have changed over the years, you know, when it come down to corporation how to work and operate. When you have a person on call, person on call, you know, he's intolerant to, you know, to have a company vehicle like that so that they have a quick response. And all that, all that I requested from my city was to have any event that, any truck is out, those trucks out, if there's Marty was to carry his truck home and he was not available, that there's a service truck up there to park, up in the shed, in the office, which is one right there now.
Well, look at him. I ain't seen no, when he did no work nowhere. Beside riding around, drinking coffee, smoking cigarettes all the time. I'm just, hey, I can't see my taxpayer money keep going and going like that. You know, I see because I'm right there coming in and out of driveway.
Alright.
Well, I'm going to say this, as the taxpayer money, when COVID funds came in and a lot of city councils and county, county commissions gave themselves big paychecks. This commission did not. This commission put the vast majority of the sums back to help with water and sewer to make it a better community and not have to raise taxes and not have to raise water bills. So I mean, you know, there's a lot that's been done that doesn't get talked about that benefits the citizens. Well, y'all don't have to pay more for the services. I mean, it's expensive to do these services in a small community, you know, with no bigger tax base than what they have. But they didn't take for themselves, they did for the community.
Wait a minute. You said they didn't take for themselves? Some, uh, someone told me they took for themselves. Some say they got 25, others say he got four grand. Others say she got a bit over 6,000. I like, damn.
City council.
Oh.
Mr. Hall.
I tell you what.
Mr. Hall.
I tell you what, up under the sunshine law, I want to make a request to get all the city employees.
I said city council, that's what I said. You're talking about two different things.
We gonna, we gonna, we gonna write it down. We gonna write it down. We gonna write it down.
I suggest, Mr. Hall, next time we have a conversation like that, like you called out just then, you caught it. Because you know, this hearsay stuff, you know, you don't get none of that now.
Hearsay, I seen this, yeah.
Okay, you seen some chicks.
No, they told. Person told me. The person told me, they told me what they got. You know it, it ain't no hearsay, you know it.
What I'm saying though, you know, what I'm saying, you know, you can't move forward with anything like that on hearsay. You know, you need evidence like you just said, you know, that you caught it.
If that person told me what they got, I'm just going by what they say they got.
You think they'd be willing to be subpoenaed? Going by what you see, if you want to press charges against the person or if you want to indict this person, you think he want to be subpoenaed?
I, 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 I know what to do. I don't think I have to do a file with my demons.
Okay.
She know what a mandine is.
Wait a minute, um. Excuse me. Yeah, fire department.
Awesome. All right. I'll take an opportunity to introduce myself. I'm training chief carver. I do the training and I'm also the recruitment and retention coordinator for Axon Fire Department and PWAFS. Um, a little bit about myself. I've been in the fire service about thirteen years. I work full-time for the city of Douglas Fire Department. And I hold a full-time position with Axon County as the training officer and recruitment retention coordinator. Um, basically, I gave all the, uh, commissioners or council members our fire reports. This is everything we ran in the county in both cities. So for Willacoochee, we had four calls of the last month in February, a couple EMS, a fire alarm and a smoke. So not a whole lot to the calls for last month. We already started having a few this month. Um, so we also had some training. The first Saturday of every month, we do eight hours worth of training. So for me reaching out to the community, I'm not used to seeing as many people in a city council meeting. Um, but so since I do, I'm gonna take opportunity. If y'all know anybody who would like to volunteer, we need volunteers yesterday. Uh, I mean, and it's anything from fighting fire, carrying water to, uh, I don't know, you come teach some school kids how to, how to stop drop and roll or calling out with them. I mean, we, uh, we try to do everything we can for our community. We try to reach out and, uh, just try to help as much as we can. Also, we had, what else we got? So we had a chance to meet with the mayor a couple of times this month. We, uh, we discussed our three-year review. We reviewed for twenty, twenty-one, twenty, no, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three. And I don't know if any of y'all really know this, but our fire department's been funded for three full-time firefighters for the last three years through a grant. Um, so I don't know how many of y'all know that. One of our firefighters that's on duty today is going to Mars. Well, the grant ran out in January and we're seeking funding for, to keep our full-time firefighters. Uh, what that does is allow our response time to be a lot better than what it normally is whenever you're dealing with just volunteer. So you, y'all, y'all know the volunteer mindset. It's three o'clock in the morning, I'm asleep, tongs drop, I gotta get up, I gotta get my clothes on. I gotta run to the fire sta, drive to the fire station, run to the fire station, whatever it may be. I gotta get the truck ready, get it crunk, wait on the air brakes to build up, and then we get to roll on. So if you're looking at five to seven minutes response time for your volunteer, well, with a paid staff member, they're at the station, they wake up, you hop in the truck, they're ready to go in two to three minutes. Two minutes is, is the state minimum that you'd be able to roll that truck. So our response times has increased drastically over the last three years. And, uh, a lot of that stems to that grant. Like I said, that grant's run out. We're, we're still seeking funding to keep these guys. The county is, is putting in to pay, ah, pay their salaries till June, or May, Mayering, whatever it may be. Um, so after that, we, we really have to find this funding. So reaching out to the community, it's great to work. You want to keep firefighters in your, in your community. Not only do they fight fire, they also run wrecks, they cut people out of cars. Um, they run the EMS calls. When EMS, your one EMS bus that you have is tied up, we, we come run these calls for y'all. So it's very important that y'all have, you know, these firefighters and training staff to be able to come in and respond ahead of y'all. Um, that's pretty much it. This part, I mean, like I said, I gotta, anybody wants to copy this, I can give you a copy. It's just a lot of work we done for the month. I did want to introduce, Zai, Zai's been a volunteer with us since he was a senior in high school.
I was freshman.
Freshman, freshman in high school, so I don't know. So Zai's been with the department for a long time with our junior program. We brought him up since he's been about fifteen, sixteen years old. He finally got his certification. When? Two weeks ago. We had two out of four pass their test to get their, to get their registered volunteer certification. Really proud of the other two tests beginning the next one. And, uh, not only is he a firefighter, he's an EMT, and this is one of our new recruits, Mr. Temple. He, uh, he just passed his EMT P test as well. Thirty-three Austin Avenue West is the address in Pearson where we're at. Anybody want to come talk to him? Worthy and welcome. Bring some friends, some family. Put y'all on a fire uniform, put y'all on that truck.
Did you say you were from the city of Douglas also?
I work full-time with the city of Douglas. I've been with them for thirteen years.
Yeah, my son was chief.
Oh, Casey. Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, Casey was my captain whenever I first come on. He's really good, really good people. We do a lot of networking too. Um, one of the things I did, didn't include on our sheet, we, uh, we do live fire training in Douglas. Um, we had the city of Brunswick come over and do some live fire training with us. And, uh, I normally take my guys from Axon County, the ones that ain't on shift, and we're gonna do live fire training with them. So this Thursday, they'll be doing some more live fire training. And, uh, so we want to make sure they're prepared to be able to handle these problems whenever they arise. So anybody ain't got no questions for me? Very good.
Tell them what ISO rating is.
Now, ISO rating is a five right now. Um, the reason it's a five is mainly because of our water source. Uh, we could be a little bit better in that area, but we got a really decent water source for Willacoochee and Pearson. Personnel always hurts us. You can't have enough firefighters. Um, our full-time staff is, like I said, we only have three full-time firefighters, one on each shift, twenty-four on 4L. Um, so that helps out a little bit. Our volunteers help, but for one paid firefighter is the equivalent of four volunteers. So that, that's, that helps us with our ISO rating as well. Um, we do, we, they, they keep up with training. They look at nine-one center on the, on the calls. There's a lot of stuff that goes into the ISO.
What, and you may not, and y'all may not know, but what, what would be the effect to the ISO if we lose our full-time?
If we lose our full-time firefighters, I, I think it's gonna hurt our ISO rating, just to be honest with you. I mean, like I said, you're looking at four to one, or one to four. Um, so you're looking at twelve people, but those three basically replace. We don't have a whole lot of volunteers anymore. Uh, the days of the volunteers dying off. Economy's really bad. I mean, you can't ask a guy to come run calls for ten dollars. And where it costs ten dollars in gas, get up and run to the fire station. Um, and then they're, they're giving up some. A lot of your, a lot of your volunteers now, they had to work two and three jobs just to be able to eat. They don't have time to volunteer. So I mean, the, like I said, the amount of the volunteers really is, is going away. Uh, but I mean, we do have some dedicated, we got about, we got about thirty-eight with our junior program as well.
What, what, what does our rating need to be to better our insurance rates?
So a one to three is good for industries. Uh, four, five and six is, is best you gonna get here, just to be honest with you.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
I'm from Willacoochee.
Yes, sir.
What does ISO stand for?
Insurance. Put me on the spot. I always struggle with this one. Is insurance?
It's, it's a rating by the insurance company, like, you know, how, how much damage they would suffer, you know, somebody.
Explain that to him, I would pick them directly.
So, so directly what it does, if you got a one to three rating that helps you, that's the best you're gonna be able to get for, for your industry. So like, uh, lane board, or if you want to know another big industry ISO rating first. City of Douglas has an ISO rating two. There ain't but so many in the state that actually has that, and the one's even harder to get. Um, so.
If I'm not mistaken, ours was double digits when they started.
So, yes, yes, when we, when they probably started, uh, you had a ten. Ten is, ten is bad. Ten, ten is not, even if you don't have a fire department, you're gonna get a ten. Um, and he's worked his way down from a ten, and I ended up with a, with a seven in one year. Like I said, we're at a five now. And they'll, they'll probably come this year and do an ISO audit, um, that they'll look at.
That was basically like, wasn't it, like a two to four hundred dollar reduction in homeowners insurance.
Well, yes, you should see, you should see. Yes. You'll see a significant, uh, decrease in your, in your premiums whenever you're looking at your, your insurance. Um, like I said, a five is prob, five is probably about the best we're gonna be able to get here unless, unless we all, all county and cities come together and throw some money at our fire department. And, you know, it just is what it is. We'll keep applying for grants and stuff like that. But, uh, yeah, five's gonna, something gonna help you with your insurance. If we go down lower, we, it get even better.
I, I have a question. Um, one time we discussed, I did the comp plan for our county. I used to work with the regional commission. But one thing that we were looking at, it, with code officers, was all three of the local governments, City of Pearson, City of Willacoochee, and the county getting together and paying that. Would that be a good idea for fire, full-time fire people if they?
So, so I've talked, I've talked with the mayor and they, they're.
So you're already doing all three of them, covering the cost, don't they?
They're willing to help with the cost. Um, roughly, just out of, off the top of my head, you're looking at probably a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars a year to fund your, your three full-time firefighters, um, which is not really a lot.
That's not on salary. Some of that's taxes, benefits.
Exactly. That's tax benefits and everything. But I mean, it's not really that bad. And the ci, and City of Pearson and City of Willacoochee already talked to us about helping, helping, you know, fund our, our full-time.
So is there, is there a grant out there? I know you said you had a grant and you're applying for it again and.
We'll, we'll, we'll apply for, anytime the saver grant, saver grant opens up, we'll apply for it. Bad thing is, if you get awarded it, a lot of times, they're not gonna re-award you that same grant without showing some kind of improvement. Us hiring the three full-time guys would be great for us. It would show that we're, we picked up the grant, it paid for those three years, and that we liked it so much, we, we employed them. And we reapply for maybe another three firefighters. And if we get it again, then you double it.
So there's not a grant out there anywhere that allows the city or the county to be a, like a, they would pay, the grant would pay half, or all of it for a while, then they'd pay half and the city pay half, uh, the money to continue like that? Is that what this grant is like?
That's, that's basically, so that, so you still, it used to be a five-year thing, and they would pay, they started off where they paid, uh, like eighty percent. Then it was like sixty. They would, they would, you know, gradually decrease so the, so the burden isn't just on the grant. It, it burden goes back to the, uh, the city or the county.
Right.
Uh, now that the saver grant, we was awarded, not only are they on the ground, I'm on the saver grant as well, uh, for my position for recruitment and retention. But, uh, it paid for three years fully funded. Three years for three firefighters. Didn't cost, it didn't cost any citizen a dime if it was funded. So, yes, sir.
One last question. Emergency management have grants available for, uh, the alarm systems for the, for weatherization?
Uh, yes, sir.
Have you all made the next step to look into that to supply, uh?
The weather radios?
The weather radios, or the other sirens that go off when there's bad weather?
So Robbie, um, I can't really speak on the M I side as much, so come up, the director or assistant director. That would be a Robbie question. Um, I know he looked into the audible at one point in time. Um, I don't know if he got approved or if it was one of the things that we just shot down. Um, I know that we did get a weather radio one year a while back, and we gave out, I don't remember how many weather radios, probably fifty or sixty weather radios. We also are pushing right now our new system. What's it called? Uh, we used to have Code Red. Now we have.
Oh, I know one.
Yeah, yeah, I, I slipped my mind. I've talked so much. Um, anyway, we've got a new system. I just saw our Facebook page. And, uh, you scan the little icon and you go through and answer the questions and it'll, it'll send notifications to your phone. Um, and it's just like, it's kind of like Code Red, uh, not, I mean, it's supposed to be better, but, uh.
Hyper-red?
Hyper-reach.
Hyper-reach.
Hyper-reach, that's it. Um, so the hyper-reach program, we're trying to get everybody in the community to sign up for it, just like we did with the Code Red. So you'll get those notifications. Not only through, you can get through text, you can get phone calls on your cell phone, you can get landline phone calls. So it will reach out to you anytime. And we're able to go in, not only with that, we can pinpoint, so if you live on Main Street, uh, you're the four houses that's right around Main Street on, on, you know, for y'all, I guess it would be West Main Street. Whatever. You're on West Main Street and the four houses are there, and there's a gas leak. Not only can we select those houses, if you're, if you're the ones in that area, we can send out an notification just to those four houses, let you know, hey, there's a gas leak in your area. You might want to evacuate or, you know, remain indoors. So just be aware of this issue at hand. I mean, it's, it's really high-tech stuff. It's really good programming. Uh, the issue, the only issue we have with it is, uh, you've got to be real knowledgeable on how to use it. So we're, we're trying to become knowledgeable in that area as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Any more questions for me? I mean, I'm at, I'm at, I'm at Echo, you know, four days, three days out of the week, right here in, uh, in Pearson. So come see me, come talk to me. I'll answer any question you got. If I don't have an answer, I'll try my best to get you an answer. And, uh, like I said, our first, our fire meeting's eight AM first Saturday of the month. Love to see any of y'all there.
Hey.
Yes, sir.
We can ready to move into the technical section, but before we do, I think, remember Mr. Troy has something to say.
Yeah, excuse my seat. Excuse my seat. I, I, I would like, I would like to thank the city, the mayor and the city councilman for the event that took place, uh, last weekend. We knew that, uh, there was a big funeral service going on, but it came off well. We were able, able to dedicate the park, uh, and Truvista, which is plan telephone, uh, awarded us, uh, funds to help, uh, help renovate the stage and to deal with the sign. And if you get a chance to go down to the park, every name that, uh, of the men that have passed, like Mr. Eddie Perkins, uh, Senior, Eddie Perkins Junior, all of those names, Jerry Hall Senior, every person named is on there that paid money, Bishop Joel Eastwood, that paid money for the, to help invest into developing that park. So we want to thank, also Truvista has pledged to, uh, to work with us, uh, for, to put wifi out on every park uh, that, that's available for the two parks. And I, once I get that information, I will pass it on to the, to the city council, mayor and city council office. Uh, it's a split program. They pay eighty percent where you can get wifi each park. My thing about Willacoochee, and I appreciate, uh, the event was very nice. Uh, all of the, all of the manufacturers and retailers. Everybody all right? You all right?
Yeah.
All, all of, all of the manufacturers and retailers are the people that, uh, uh, helped support it and sponsor the event. Did not come from city monies, uh, but it was sponsored by all of the businesses to take it on. Even the Kirkland family came from out of town to do what had to be done. The senior citizens, uh, like Sheila Gaskin and the McCranes appreciated the idea that, uh, that, um, that this event happened. Uh, banker Charlie Bray said that he was appreciative for what the citizens of Willacoochee did for the park, uh, to make it successful. So I say going forward, we're a small town. I like to be a part of what's going on. We're not to overstep any city council persons, but I say to all of us that are here, we're small. If we can't work together, we will never grow.
Right.
Thank you. And if we got, we got complaints towards it, I suggest we look towards a solution to help. And then I gotta say this. Glenn Bailey stayed with us with every event from sunup to sundown, even with the mob, and he wasn't on paper. Uh, Glenn Joyner has run and done things for people, and I'm just calling names out. Do y'all say they writing? But I've seen a lot of things that they've done to help people that we don't know about. So I think, I think everybody and the city workers have cleaned up that park. Not a next park need to be cleaned up. We got children in this community that, that have nothing to do, that are suffering, that are getting on drugs. And I think we should have a big meeting to help keep our kids and our community safe, not just only our young kids, but you, we got a lot of senior citizens here. What are we doing to help, to promote, to help out? So I think if we come together and everybody don't have an ownership, including me, if I'm at fault, I apologize. But I think it's time to come together to make Willacoochee greater.
That's right.
And that's what we gotta do.
You know, Troy, with that being said, you know, I can just beg enough, having, uh, three, um, that, these parks, we won't have no kids at home anymore.
My, my name is Eddie Perkins. Uh, I'm pretty sure everybody know me. Um, I own this little piece of property right here behind the car wash. And I, speaking of coming together, I wanted to put my cabin up to do like a little game room for the kids. But the, uh, county is telling me I need to talk with y'all, because they say some stuff has changed there. I bought the house. Quarter, eight, twelve, a man, but basically they saying, talk to y'all, if y'all okay with it, who, who always okay with it. Then they gonna see if they, uh, see what they can do by, you know, helping me get turned on and all that. So I want this, come talk to the city. Uh, the building ain't gonna be but like sixteen by forty, so that's like, maybe like fifteen hundred square feet. I own five dollars square feet, so. I just wanna, like, the land type of mine ain't Eva Mae Johnson. I don't know if y'all know her, but she was one of the first African-Americans crossboat for Axon County Training School right here in Willacoochee. And don't nobody really. in Willacoochee, and don't nobody really honor her like that, you know, and, and so I wanna do something for my auntie, I wanna get back to the community, and like Reverend Troy saying, I, I think it's time for everybody to come together and make Willacoochee big again, great again, you know, like, we, they don't have nothing to do, they don't got nowhere to go, you know, so that's, that's what I wanted to do.
I tell you what, young man, come up with a plan and proposal, and, um, present it to us, we'll go for that with you. Alright? If you got some good ideas in there.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say I'm gonna get to, because you asked us where to get it, and I'm gonna be brief. I'm gonna get to Free Press, I go across the state doing this recording, I'm on YouTube, Boston GBR, Instagram, all over, two thou- two million views, two million views and five thousand subscribers, and this could be seen on Boston GBR in a few days. But one thing I wanna say to you all, I thank you all for serving on the, on the, on the council, and thank you for serving. Many of us sit back, sometimes criticized, but we never served, and it takes a lot to do that, and I wanna commend you all for doing it. Lastly, I wanna thank you elected officials. I go across the state of Georgia, I must say on record here, and GMA probably will watch this too, and I love the openness of this meeting. Uh, lot of cities that I've been to, you would not have the opportunity to express yourself as I, as I have seen here tonight, and that's what I'm mostly impressed with, because on the informal government, we, the citizens and the taxpayers make up these cities, so I wanna thank you elected officials, or the ones before you, who made this possible, and not taking your charter or your orders and cutting it down, so these people be disrespected. I commend all of you, and Willacoochee ought to give yourself a pat on the back, that's it, y'all.
Alright, Mr. Boz, you go on to the next section.
Right, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, I wanna thank all you guys that come out tonight, good.
Looking into history. I know that we surely been blessed. Coming out of misery. To rising sun in the west. Why should we cling to the earth? When we can reach to the sky, I wanna know. It's time that we realize our worth. Stop letting time pass us by, 'cause we've got independent leadership. And guidance divine, indecision is decision, so make up your mind, stop wasting time and move with conviction, no need to have any fear, got to be mindful of our mission, victory is near now. Now that we have the dream, let's see if we can be people who really care humanity. Let's build a world anew, a big society. It belongs to me and you, responsibility. While we could never, never seem to find our place. But then we experienced a mind evolution. We begin to strengthen efforts to find the solutions, searching for the truth and yearning to succeed, the minds I reveal, the reality, reality, that without moral direction, success we could never achieve, we only be heading for destruction, that's what our fate would be, our fate would be now. Now that we have the dream, let's see if we can be people who really care humanity. Let's build a world anew, a big society. It belongs to me and you, responsibility. Responsibility belongs to you and me, a big society, a reconstructive family. Responsibility. Responsibility. It belongs to you. Responsibility. A big society. Responsibility. Reconstruct the family. Responsibility. I can remember my grandma used to say to her next-door neighbor, Martha, I tell you, I just don't know what's getting into these young people today, just they got no sense of responsibility, don't wanna work, all they wanna do is go down to a grog, they call it a disco now, lazy, it's just a mess, I tell you, but let me tell you one thing, honey, there's gonna be some changes made around here, you hear me? Responsibility. Responsibility. A big society. Responsibility. Reconstruct the family. Responsibility. To take every way. Do our deeds and what we say, stop leaving things to come what may, you got to take steps to a better day. Responsibility. 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 Yeah, yeah.